Recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight we have oath of police officer Nicholas Ori. And Nicholas, you've been with us for how long?
Uh, since the end of January.
End of January, but we're just getting her on to swearing again, so why don't you come up to the podium there?
And present with him, he has parents?
And your mom and dad?
Yep.
Okay. And what's your name?
Jenny.
Jenny and Mike, nice to meet you.
Nice.
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Nicholas Ori.
I Nicholas Ori.
On my honor.
On my honor.
Will never betray my badge.
Will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
I will uphold the United States Constitution.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota and its laws.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota and its laws.
I will uphold the ordinances of the city of New Prague.
I will uphold the ordinance of the city of New Prague.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And faithfully serve my agency.
And community to the best of my abilities.
And community to the best of my abilities.
Giving a couple of signatures. Now I want to know what his signature is. Well, I'll never, you will never give me your signature.
Only because we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, I know, that's one thing, but.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
See you tomorrow.
Thanks for coming, good luck guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, or approval of the agenda. I just thought maybe we could move general business up and listen to the gentleman's complaint maybe after the agenda, consent agenda, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
That would be fine.
Okay. So with that addition amendment, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, hearing done, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda, I guess that was to approve that agenda. The consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion is second. Any other discussion, hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to the appeal, a notice of violation. Ken, do you wanna?
I can take this.
Okay.
Yes, so. I didn't get it moved in time. Uh, so on June fifteenth, the city issued a notice of violation for tall grass and weeds to the property owner at twelve fourteen Olivia Street Southeast, Justin McCormick here. Specifically, this nuisance was addressing the height of grass in his backyard adjacent to County Road twenty-nine. While the street is maintained by the county, boulevard responsibilities generally fall on the adjacent property owner, similar to all the other property owners across the city. Previously, the city had been mowing this grass, but as you know, we recently changed our mowing maps to be more equitable to all citizens. Since we figured we either should mow all people's boulevards or nobodies. So on June twentieth then, Mr. McCormick did leave a message that he was requesting a hearing to dispute this violation. And per our code, he is allowed to do that, and so that is why he's before you today. We don't really have a specific process laid out like we do some public hearings in this case. I figured I would give maybe Ken the chance to kind of background the city's perspective a little bit. Give Mr. McCormick a chance to state his case and then look for a decision from the city council.
Yes, I give a little background, so it was probably around mid-May, I think when we informed the council of the discussions on notices going out initially as kind of courtesy notices to a number of residents and property owners towards the end of May. Those did go out, we ended up following that up with official violation notices that went to not only property owners, but went to a number of people that were tenants in properties or tenants in commercial buildings. And then obviously we gave like any other nuisance violation letter deadline to comply with the new situation there. We fielded many, many, many phone calls from not only property owners that are business owners, but also a number of residential owners. Majority of the residential property owners that were affected were along Olivia Street, obviously, which is where Mr. McCormick's property lies, as well as, I believe, twenty-four other residential property owners in that area. But we also had a large area along Main Street that was also affected on both the east side and west side of town. So again, like Josh explained, it was just trying to be equitable in where we were mowing and maintaining, and that was whether there was a trail or sidewalk along that boulevard area. We wanted to make sure we were treating them all equally. So I think that's really all the more background I can probably give on it at this point, but I can stand for questions as well.
Does the council have any questions for Ken?
What, when did we decide that? I can't, was that brought, was that a decision that staff made or did it go in from the council? I can't recall the.
It was a staff recommendation and then it was, I forget what meeting in May that was brought forward.
Yeah, I feel it was a meeting in May.
Okay, and I did miss a meeting in May, so that could have been it.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And at that time, can I just get a synopsis of what the council's feelings were on it?
I don't think there was really much of any discussion on it at that point.
Okay.
I think it was actually Public Works Director Rinda that had brought up that agenda item at that time.
Okay.
So I'm not getting it, what is the dispute over? If his lawn was long, his lawn, wrong, lawn was long.
And, and yes, and so that was where Mr. McCormick is allowed to now state his case as to why there is a dispute over.
So you build them, you cut it and then you build them.
We did not, no, we did not cut it.
We did not cut it, so per code, because he either paid the bill or not paid it. Either he mowed it himself or disputed it, we, we left the grass alone until after this hearing, so that, that way we wouldn't do anything prior to that.
Okay. Mr. McCormick.
So yeah, my name's Justin McCormick, I'm property owner at twelve fourteen Olivia Street Southeast. And I guess the, the purpose of this hearing, I guess was the only way I could do it. So I actually called and left messages and stopped into the city council or city hall here seven times prior to getting the notice of violation letter. And then it wasn't until I requested a hearing that I got a call back regarding this issue. And from my understanding from talking to Ken and Josh previously is that the only way to really get a hearing is to be in violation and each property owner would have to be in violation to raise their concerns in front of the council. So even though I'm the only one speaking today, I have a neighbor that's here and I can tell you from other neighbors I've spoke to that it's kind of a majority concern. Majority that feel that this is a burden to us as property owners of the recent change. And so that's the reason that this is in front of you is because I had to basically not mow that section of my proper, of the city's property in order to get this brought up for discussion. So as you can see from the handout that I supplied here, so from the beacon, shows my property here in the middle. The area that's disputing that changed is the part that is on the southern end of the property, past the city-owned and maintained walking path. Just kind of doing a comparison with from the beacon and their measurement tools. My entire front yard is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight square feet approximately. And the area that I am responsible to mow now is one thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet. Essentially, I got another front yard. And the city maintains the path that goes on the east side and the south side of my property. I also kind of showed here the second picture, it's a little outdated, it's all full of homes now. But there's twenty-four people, including the far east side, land that's owned by the developers, Kubish's. That also, I think, received a violation notice initially to maintain that portion. The other pictures on the second, third page are just comparisons of similar situations where there are properties that have essentially two boulevards, the front and the backside. One was from someone in the city of Belle Plaine, the other one in the city of Shakopee. Both border county roads within the city limits and neither of those areas in particular are maintained by property owners. So my concern here is that this is something that's changed. And I think the burden on the property owners are greater than the benefit to the city by not mowing this. Like I said, it's a substantial amount of property that now I have to maintain. And we're not expected to maintain the path, but essentially it's a sidewalk and I have to maintain the front sidewalk, so I don't see where this would differ from snow removal versus grass. It's something that's beyond, it's something different, unique to most property owners in New Prague. So I'm hoping you guys can weigh in on that and hopefully make a decision regarding this, so. And currently my property is in compliance. I just had to, like I said, not mow it to bring it up in front of you guys.
So you maintain the boulevard in front of your house, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that the boulevard in front of the house is significantly smaller, as you can see from the aerial.
I do see it.
Than the ditch, you know, and it's along County Road, fifty-five mile an hour traffic, me with a push mower, it's not necessarily the most ideal situation. It's the city limits as well. I know I've spoke to the gentleman in charge of the highway department, he offered that they could mow it to some extent, Ken I believe talked to him. It probably wouldn't fall within the city's ordinance of one foot by the time they would do anything to that area.
So I guess I, I have a question for the city is, how many other areas within the city have this similar situation where they have a larger boulevard that might be next to a trail or next to, you know, to a road that the property owners are expected to maintain?
Essentially, all of the areas that were notified had the same issue, including Main Street along obviously west side and east side of town, because we have trails in both those areas, actually one of them is called the trail, we're tapping on later on the agenda, but yeah, we don't own the property or on the trail, it is obviously within the right-of-way and that goes for every sidewalk throughout town too, and we don't mow any of those areas, so. We do have some areas where the city does own trail property for the Greenway Trail, kind of my lady slipper through the Greenway area up in that neck of the woods where we do take care of that area, but we actually hold title to that property. It's not just an easement or anything in those cases, but everywhere else where they're in right-of-way, we don't, at this point, we're not maintaining any of those areas.
And then this property in question, that is not owned by the city, is it owned by the homeowner?
So it is technically owned by the property owner, it is just right-of-way that's held in trust for the city as right-of-way.
Okay.
If we had Scott Riggs here, he could go over the in-depth legal analysis on that, but in effect, all the property owners in town own, you actually own to the centerline of the right-of-way, it's just that right-of-way is dedicated on the plat, held in public trust for public use for road, sidewalk, utility easements, that kind of thing.
So besides, just to follow Maggie's question, I heard from a resident that's out west of town on nineteen that ran into that same issue too. Is, and I understand the equity part, to be equitable amongst all residents, but there is a big difference between one or two stripes of, from the, in the city, from the sidewalk to the street compared to nineteen hundred and fifty-eight square feet, you know? So I don't know if the equity thing, I mean, it doesn't take a person, a homeowner, much on Main Street to just go on the other side of the sidewalk and go up and down once and twice on a thirty-five foot.
Right.
Lot, or thirty-foot lot. So how many other, besides this, can you recall? Obviously, the, the one house or a couple of houses on nineteen.
Close to seventy property owners overall that were notified of similar situations, whether they be residential or commercial, it was kind of a mix of both throughout.
So it seems to me like if we said, you know, the equity part would be, you know, if you're in town and you have a hundred and fifty square feet to mow, or whatever that would be, maybe we limit it to that and then the city mows most of it, so we're not putting the burden on those seventy homeowners to go into a ditch. I'm assuming there's water in there sometimes and.
Sometimes there's garbage, trash, whatever people throw.
Without a.
County road, yeah.
And if alls you have is a push mower, I could see where that could create a huge problem, it's compared to a commercial or the ones the city uses.
And from like the walking path to the top of the road, it's like actually almost like five and a half or six feet, so it's actually inclined as well, in addition to the large square footage.
So I guess coming from a city's staff perspective, I know when you start mowing definitely smaller pieces, you may be mowing this person's but not this person's and this person's. That, from a city's perspective, that's just staff time of them having to basically move equipment around to find all the spots that may or may not have been mowed.
But, so is this Public Works or is this Parks? Who does that mowing?
Parks Department, Parks.
So we just gave them a new full-time person?
We did, but we also hired less temporary people to compensate for that.
I mean, I feel for the homeowners, that is a big chunk and it's not the, it's not like it's, you know, sod. I mean, this is weeds and cattails and whatever else, I'm assuming. Which is a little different when you're trying to mow it.
Did the city do like a cost-benefit analysis at all with that, like how much they pay an employee to, you know, per hour? How many times a year that they would have to mow that property to figure out what the benefit was that the city was saving?
So we didn't go into a highly in-depth analysis on everything, we kind of looked at total acreage and then we looked at, well, why, why are we mowing this, along this street here and we're not mowing along this street here? And then we kind of, we figured out what, what was almost fifteen, twenty percent of mowing acres that the city maintains on a, depending on the rain year, sometimes even twice a week that we were able to basically cut out to allow them to focus more in parks instead of necessarily along streets where not everybody got their street mow. Because we hear it both, not only with mowing, I mean, we hear it with shoveling too, I mean, some, some people get their sidewalk shoveled and others don't. So we're, we're trying to make it as fair as possible for everybody and this is another situation that we were looking at that.
And that kind of raises a concern to me of the shoveling thing, because, you know, I wasn't previously expected to maintain this section. And then when will it change where now I'm required to snowblower shovel the walking trail as I am the front sidewalk that borders my property? And I guess I don't understand where, where that limit stops. So not every property owner has a walking path on the backside, but a good majority of residents have sidewalks in the front of their property, so it's kind of the same thing to me that snow and grass would be the same type of deal where the city would have to, you know, stop mowing or stop shoveling everything if they're going to stop mowing everything. And so, I mean, I don't know if that would be.
I don't know if you live there, I mean, I mean, what do you have, have you been mowing it in?
Five years.
You decided to quit today or?
Nope, it's just that since I received the, received the letter, I opted not to mow that area in order to have it brought in front of the council, so I still.
Normally you do, you do mow it.
No, the city has been mowing it.
Yep.
Normally the city.
The city's been mowing it since the beginning of the development, however many years ago. I've been there five years myself, never had to mow it and I was told directly from an agent that works with developers that that was not my property, the path is not my property, it's not maintained by me, even though it's on my property, it's city-maintained. And everything beyond that was city-maintained.
So we don't, and Matt's not here tonight, but so do we, we don't know how many man-hours it takes to mow the property on those seventy houses that got served the letter?
No, and I don't, I don't believe it, it wasn't done to necessarily save man-hours or anything like that, it was just some people were getting a benefit that others were not, is really what it came down to. It's hard for us to answer the question of why are we mowing here and why are we not mowing somebody else's boulevard that might be fifteen feet wide? Where this might be, you know, twenty-five feet wide.
Right.
I mean, we're talking minute differences in some of the right-of-way and honestly, we could not answer that on any of those questions.
Well, that's where.
I've been, I've worked here eighteen years and I've wondered in a number of areas, why do we mow that area and why do we not mow, you know, two lots down? I mean, we have had that situation a number of times.
Okay.
So the seventy notices that went out were situations just like this?
Yep.
Where the city had been mowing and then, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I misunderstood that.
I guess I'd like to know more of the ones that weren't getting it and maybe Matt could answer that first to start out, but and again, I think it comes down to a burden, I don't think it's really an equity thing as much as as I said, your twenty-five, thirty-foot lot on the other side of the sidewalk, that's once down with a lawnmower, twenty-five feet and once back with a lawnmower, and usually that's sod from when you built your house, which is, that grass is a lot different to mow than scrub and certainly nineteen, almost two thousand square feet is a huge difference and that creates a huge burden on. But I don't know, like you said, maybe there's some fifteen feet by fifteen feet that, you know, where do you draw the line? Maybe it's a hundred and fifty feet from the normal, if you're in town.
Yeah, typical right-of-way would, you know, from property owner, back of the curb into property land would be about twelve feet typically on, we'll just say newer areas of town. It'll vary widely along Main Street in different areas. So I don't think we're a ton off from that, but where, where kind of the difference is in this case, it's obviously twenty-five feet of mowable area and then there are another, you know, eight to ten feet of trail here or other areas of town, so, you know, it's upwards of thirty-five feet of additional property where it might even be twelve feet on a typical lot, residential lot.
I mean, I could see where, I mean, if, I, I find it hard to believe that it was, that there was people complaining about taking two swipes of the lawnmower on the other side of the sidewalk in, in town in a residential area. You know, but I'm not, I've seen weirder things, so maybe there were people that were complaining about it, but maybe the city could come up with the fact that we require these homeowners to mow a hundred and fifty feet, or you know, twenty-five feet, two swipes, and then we do the rest or, so everybody gets the same benefit if it's, you know? I, I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas.
I know, and I, I was sitting here thinking too, I mean, but we could, we could say, hey, no problem, we'll get it and you could leave here and then tomorrow we'd have twelve more people standing there going, hey, we need that done too, so.
I would, I'd have that argument all day long, if they can't go on the other side of the sidewalk, if they're in town for twenty-five feet and do two swipes of grass. We're not talking ditch weed and cattails and whatever else, that's, I mean, that's, that's tough grass in there, in those ditches.
I guess I looked at, when I drove around and looked at what, what was given up. Other than this property, all the others, it's kind of their front of their business. You know, when I'm, when I'm, or the front of their whatever, it's their front. So where this is the back and it's a county road and they kind of think, well, this is a little unique versus the rest of them because it is their front of their business. If it's not, the grass isn't cut, it looks crappy. You know, I think pretty much everybody has a fence along this, don't you?
Majority.
Majority have fences for probably the walking path and the, and the traffic on the, on the county road, but I don't know why we just can't cut it, just this one, this stretch in here. Because it is a backyard and against a walking trail and it's, it's different than the rest of them I looked at. Because it's their backyard.
Or we come up with some dimensions, so that if it's this dimension or more, the city will cut it just because it is a burden.
It's unique for sure.
It's unique, you know, to me, if I was a business owner and the city didn't cut the ditch weed in front of my business, I'm going to cut it because I want my business to look. And I'm talking, I know on the, on the west side of town, there's a couple of different scenarios because those are, it's different, but like on the east side, I'm going to cut it because it makes my, front of my business look crappy.
So I will say, if you're going to have the city cut back here, it's probably better for the city to just cut the whole thing.
Yes, that's, that's what I meant.
Or especially when we, usually it's temporary workers back there, they're not going to say, okay, so I can't cut six feet of this.
No, 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 I, I wasn't talking about that.
I don't, I just find it hard to believe.
Yeah, I just.
I, I mean, it, it's very similar to the people we have complain that we, they have to use their snow blower in two passes on the sidewalk when someone over there gets their sidewalk snowblowed by the city.
Right.
It, it's, I mean, same type of argument that we hear for those.
Right, and again, I think there was a, there was a, a chance to make that right too by just, I don't know if it's alternate year after year or if it's alternate snowstorm after snowstorm or whatever.
Yeah, and, and that's one that we're still looking at to make sure we get it done by winter, but, I mean, it, it's similar complaints that we've heard of.
Sure, I guess I'd like to know what Matt, you know, I mean, how much time is this going to take, you know, his staff and you know, I mean, if it's two to three hours a week or if it's, maybe it's two days, I don't know, you know, but that would help too, I guess.
Doug, just the area like Olivia and twenty-nine?
Yeah, that, that's it.
Well, no, I was thinking, because I, I heard from.
Oh.
On nineteen.
Yes.
So wherever we, wherever the seventy notes went out, you know, we should probably.
I got you there, yep, I mean, how much time did that cut back?
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
So I guess my question, especially along nineteen, I mean, a lot of those were commercial businesses. Are, are we putting a policy in place where we do it for residents but not commercial businesses? Are we doing everything along nineteen? That, that.
I think that's a point of discussion too, I mean, there's plenty of other burdens that we put on businesses, you know, on, on Main Street and whatnot. As far as shoveling and whatnot that that we don't put on residents, but how many businesses are there going west of nineteen, the Cabinet Place?
Well, to, to me, it's basically the cemetery and Bruce, Rinda, and then the field there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, everybody's always cut their grass.
That was on nineteen, yeah.
I'm correct, okay, thank you.
And then the whole south side of Maine as well, which got Meyer Brookside Farms, Palmer Welcome.
Oh, that over there?
Right up to Donna Marlene Mushes.
Yeah, but they've always cut there.
Uh, we, we did some areas over there.
Did you? Okay.
Across from Raven Tree there or?
Correct.
Yeah, to, and then to the east a little bit.
We got calls from most everybody. But between Matt and myself, because we were both on the letters.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody can call, so. Yeah, I don't know how many Matt fielded, but I know I fielded a number of them, so.
Well, can we table it and then maybe wait till Matt's back on the next meeting and then discuss it a, a little bit more, but.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll see if I can have him look into just some rough numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would like that, I don't know if you guys.
It's fine.
And ask him, you know, if you're out there measuring, I mean, if we did the farthest point of the grass, you know what I mean, and just went up ten feet and then he'd have to take care of the rest or something, but if we're going to, like you said, if you're going to have the equipment in there, he might as well do it.
I don't.
Let's table it.
But I think, I think like this is the only area where they have backyards up against, and, and it could end up being more, I mean, I shouldn't say the only area, but this big is. this big is ten-
This really was the only area.
Ten, yeah, because ten-
Lots where you have, you know, city street frontage or double frontage on two sides.
Well, is that okay, Mr. McCormick, if we wait and we'll try to get a little bit more, but I feel for you and the residents, I mean, I could see where that's pretty tough, but-
You get a stay of execution. It'll either be the next council meeting or the one after.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Because I know the next council meeting might be a little full, so.
And if you wanna mow it in that time, I think we could arrange for you to speak at the next meeting too, can't we? We don't have to wait.
You did more, didn't you?
He had to wait till it was-
Uh, someone else ended up mowing it, I don't know.
Okay, somebody did, okay.
The county did eight feet, and I'm not sure the other part, so.
Okay.
We just plant it with milkweed, you know, and call it a butterfly corridor.
You just introduce something new, I mean, the county does part of it already?
They, they were asked, and Mr. McCormick actually contacted them, and they said, yeah, we can do like any other county road, um, and they brought their rough cutter through and did basically eight feet into the, um, behind the curb line, and they did that.
It was like right after the letter was sent out.
About that.
I was gonna say, yeah, and they'd do that.
They only do it a couple of times a year.
Yeah, they do it two, three times top of the year.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, um, now, does anybody else wanna speak, or wait? Does, the public's invited to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, does anybody have have anything that they wanna speak to? Seeing and hearing done, we'll go on to the resolutions. The first, um, is about a variance for a sixty-nine SF electronic variable message sign.
Put my computer up on there.
So a quick PowerPoint for the sign variance for the high school here for you.
And this is for the high school.
Okay.
All right, so this is item V three, twenty-twenty-two for a, um, sign size variance for a electronic variable message sign at the high school from are normally allowed thirty-two square feet, and they want a sixty-nine square foot sign, and additionally, they wanna keep the existing monument sign that says Home of the Trojans on the property as well, so, again, New Prague area schools is the applicant, they did apologize, Mr. Dittburner called, they did not have anybody available to come to the meeting tonight due to vacations and other things they had going on, so I said, don't worry about it, I think we can handle it, pretty straightforward, um, they did have Craig Most, their operations director, at the planning commission meeting to answer questions. Again, the, uh, argument that they made was that they have fifty-one acres of land at the high school. The zoning ordinance typically looks at non-residential property, or not residential use property in, uh, these residential districts like churches, schools, uh, what have you, um, all the same, having that thirty-two square foot limit, so one of the arguments is that they've got a fifty-one acre campus and they're trying to provide for not only that school, but school property in general for, um, signage, just kind of community events, sporting events, that type of thing. And, uh, you know, obviously make that visible to people that are driving by. So what they are proposing is to put that right along Twelfth Street Northeast, um, right near the entrance that they have just west of the roundabout at, um, Columbus and Twelfth Street there, uh, would be placed sixteen and a half feet north of the sidewalk, which is exactly ten feet from the property line, meeting the, uh, ten-foot setback for a sign. Um, so no issue with that, uh, really, it's just the size of the sign that, uh, was the, the issue at hand. Uh, ultimately, the planning commission at their meeting on June twenty-second did vote to recommend approval of that, um, sign variance. Just a couple of maps here, obviously, the high school campus, you've got, uh, the, uh, residential zoning kind of on all sides of the property there, but directly to the south, uh, you have, uh, the Alternative Learning Center, Raven Stream, or Falcon Ridge, excuse me, uh, the football field, gymnastics building, and then the community center has residential, um, zoning, but non-residential uses, and they're all, you know, generally related to, um, the school and athletic type, uh, facilities there. So as far as the whole, uh, appearance and everything, it's not a, you know, pure residential area. So again, that location is, uh, right on that first entrance into the high school up, uh, near the front door. Uh, on the overhead view, you can see the location of the existing Home of the Trojans sign that they would like to keep. It's not lighted, um, it's not a very large sign, and they would just like to keep that as part of their, uh, overall campus visual, but this electronic sign would be, um, within, uh, ten feet of their property line along Twelfth. Here's the actual sign in question, um, they did a, or their sign company, Scenic Sign Corp, did a nice, uh, mock-up of how big that sign would look. I don't know if it's a hundred percent to scale, it's actually only ten feet, um, that's a relatively short, uh, person they have drawn in there, but, um, it gives a pretty good visual, uh, for where it would be placed and how that would, uh, be situated there. Just a couple other views here that we put together, it actually faced east-west for the reading signs, I don't have the great software to, to completely mock that up correctly, but um, it would be visible to east-west traffic on Twelfth. And then that bottom picture on the, uh, right is the existing Home of the Trojans sign that they would like to, um, keep in place there, so. Uh, again, staff and recommend, or and planning commission do recommend approval of the variance for the, um, sign to be sixty-nine square feet, and we do have the resolution drafted in the packet that would provide the findings to support that, uh, approval. So with that, I'll leave this sign schematic up, and if you have any questions, I can stand and answer those.
I'll just point out, because I'm on the planning commission, that when we discussed it, we had asked if, for, because it will face some of the homes towards heritage development there, that if it did bother people or whatever, that if it turned out to be too bright, they can actually shut it off or put a timer on it, so it could, at ten o'clock, be turned off or whatever, so it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't have to stay on twenty-four hours, so.
If it's even that bright.
Yeah, if it, just in the worst case scenario, if it did-
I believe you said he could program it to do that, where they wouldn't even have to necessarily monitor it, but, say, ten o'clock, just shut it down.
Yeah.
How big is the sign in front of Holy Trinity?
Uh, very similar to this one, actually, very close in size.
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna be parallel to the, to their entrance, I mean, over, okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I'd look to somebody to offer the resolution.
I'll make the, um, I'll make the motion, um, to accept resolution twenty-two oh seven oh five oh one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rick made the motion, seconded by Sean, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, all right. Next is the front yard setback along Seventh Street Northwest.
Another PowerPoint for you tonight in this variance request, so this one is V four, twenty-twenty-two for uh, variances for both the front setback to Seventh Street Northwest, as well as maximum building coverage, and the applicant for this item is MVE Biological Solutions US LLC, and we have, uh, representative from MVE uh, Biological Solutions here tonight for you, should you have any questions, so, um, just wanted to point that out as well. So, little background on MVE building, this particular building, uh, was built initially in nineteen eighty-six, it was fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven square feet at that time. Um, another addition in two thousand and five brought that building size in total to thirty-two thousand and forty square feet, which is what it is today. Uh, MVE Biological Solutions acquired the building in October of twenty-twenty-one, and then, as most of you are aware, um, in early twenty-twenty-two, they did have fire damage, uh, to the building, and, um, that was very early on in their tenure of ownership for the building, but um, at this point, they are proposing another twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eight square feet in building additions. That would be, uh, just over fourteen thousand square feet in production of space to the building, that would be on the northwest side of the building. And then ninety-six hundred square feet of warehousing on the northwest side of the, or northeast side of the building, excuse me, and then uh, the very southeast portion of the building is the smallest portion of the addition, is about twenty-eight hundred square feet of, uh, what would be for pallet storage. Um, this addition would also allow their workforce to increase by approximately twenty-five percent. We'll put up some, uh, maps here in a second, but the variance for the front yard setback, uh, ordinance normally requires in our industrial district to have a forty-foot front setback. They're requesting that be reduced to twenty-seven feet, uh, from that property line along Seventh Street Northwest. And then the maximum building coverage is actually, uh, very small, a two-point-one percent variance from the normal forty percent building coverage in that industrial district. Planning commission did review and recommended approval at their meeting on June twenty-second. So, little site map for everybody to look at here, kind of the pink-purple color there. Uh, outlined in red is the MVE Biological Solutions property, you can see on the air photo there that actually Chart Industries has been, and still as of very recently, actually, I think they might still be there, some tanks are stored on the, uh, MVE property, um, so that will obviously be changing with the building addition. Um, but everything surrounding, we have the industrial, um, uh, zoning extending south of, uh, Seventh Street, but we do have our utility building to the south, which was granted a variance, uh, back a couple of years ago for their addition, and that was a variance for both uh, front setback to Seventh Street Northwest, as well as another, um, setback variance to First Avenue Northwest, but um, this particular subject, uh, property now is only looking for that variance from Seventh Street. Little bit better zoomed in here, area with the three, um, addition, um, components highlighted there for the production, warehousing, and pallet storage, so one of the big things this will do is obviously clean up the look of the building, particularly that west side, or east side of the building for the warehouse addition, which will bring in all of that exterior storage into a, you know, controlled space. Won't have that look from the road with all the pallet racking and everything, um, and then obviously the pallet storage as well, which has kind of been on that very southeast side of the building, that will be now inside the building. So I think that would be very visually, uh, much of, uh, an improvement over what they have there today. Here's more of the schematic drawing, uh, the red line on the drawing, uh, denotes the forty-foot, uh, normally required setback. So actually see the existing building, um, as it is right now, already does not meet that, and they're just wanting to extend that building wall directly to the east for that pallet storage addition. Every other portion of the building meets the, uh, setbacks that are required for the building. Uh, regarding the minimum or maximum building coverage for the lot, they did, uh, have discussions with Chart about acquiring some property in order to gain enough new property from Chart to avoid the, uh, maximum building coverage limitation, uh, they're unable to, uh, ultimately come to that, um, conclusion, and quite honestly, whether they had acquired that or not, it really doesn't change the overall view of the area, just having, you know, we'll just call it the, a property line, which is really an imaginary line, just shifting that to achieve that. You know, I don't know that there would have really been any true benefit to having them acquire that, so, um, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge the variance, we have large open storage areas all around the building anyway. So here are the areas that will be cleaned up with the building additions, you've obviously got pallet storage right there on the corner, and then the, uh, other materials on the racking, uh, which will be enclosed in that warehousing area on that east side of the building, so, great visual improvement. And then these pictures are from the, where the production addition will be to the building, obviously, Chart's tanks will have to move off the property, but that's where that building addition will be for the main production, um, area that will be added on. And then just a couple of older Google street views showing how, over time, the facility has, uh, continued to grow. Um, back in twenty thirteen when these photos were taken, there was a lot less, um, outdoor storage in that particular area, but um, they're continuing to, uh, do well and grow, and I think this will, uh, accomplish what they need to continue to grow and obviously make the property a bit more attractive to the general public. So I think I will, um, leave this photo up of, uh, I think this was taken in April of twenty-twenty, so very current photo, but again, gives you kind of the visual of what they have going on there, but, um, staff and the recom, and planning commission recommend approval with the, uh, findings and conditions that were in the variance, uh, with the staff memo.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Did those residents on the east side, because, uh, last time that there was a, a deal, they were right in on that, have they been contacted and asked for their-
Yeah, they were all notified, and we did not have anybody come to the public, or the, uh, public meeting for the planning commission, and we also did not have anybody else call or, uh, write with any comments, um, since they were notified.
Cool.
That would have expected.
I expected it as well, but we did not get any.
Okay, um, otherwise, if there's no questions, I would take a motion to approve the next resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance V four, two zero two two via resolution two-two, zero seven, zero five, zero two.
Second. Maggie made the motion, seconded by Sean, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, the next is appointing election judges for the twenty-twenty-two state primary election.
So I'll take that one, uh, we have two resolutions in front of you tonight, one for primary election judges and the other for general election judges, they're actually the same list of um, judges, we will not utilize all of them for the primary, we'll obviously play that by ear what we actually need, but everybody does need to attend training, training is coming up for, uh, the Sura County here, or, uh, Sura County and Scott County in the month of July, obviously leading up to the, uh, primary election, and um, we have our pay at thirteen dollars an hour for normal judges and fifteen for head judges, which was included in the budget for the election, uh, period here in twenty-twenty-two, so, I don't think I have much else to note on that, but-
I just have a question, so, some of these, don't they have to, um, declare a party on these?
Yes, they do have to declare parties, so anytime we have activities where two judges are doing a task like signing ballots or emptying the ballot box, we have to, I obviously have them make sure that we're getting two of different parties, whether it be Republican, Democrat, or there's other major parties um, involved, or even, um, what do they call it, not undeclared or, um,
Independent.
Independent, sorry, um, but yes, we have to verify that when we're doing those tasks specifically.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Um, is there any other discussion or any questions? I would look to somebody to offer this motion. So moved. Okay, Sean offered resolution twenty-two dash zero seven dash zero five dash zero four. Is that right?
And do you wanna do-
Zero three, you should probably do zero three first and then zero four.
Yeah.
Two separate motions. Well, I did zero three.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that, so zero three, um, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, how about the next?
I'll take the twenty-two oh seven oh five oh four.
Okay.
Second.
Rick made the motion, Sean seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay. And then approving limited use permit with MinDOT.
I'll take that one, so going back to, um, over ten years ago, in fact, the West Trunk Highway nineteen trail from Phillips Park West to basically right at the edge of Raven Stream Village, um, developments out there near Raven Stream, we had to enter into this, uh, limited use permit with MinDOT to, uh, gain some grant money and ultimately, um, have that trail installed, uh, on that segment, and there's a little map in the packet that you can see that kind of highlighted the area in, in red for the agreement. Uh, but in a nutshell, that ten-year time period has, uh, come to an end, uh, or will come to an end on, uh, August sixth of twenty-twenty-two, and in order to continue to have that trail there, um, MinDOT sent this limited use permit uh, agreement here for our review, basically, we just have to maintain it anywhere from shoveling it to, um, seal coating, or in our case, put that soybean oil down on there, and then any other repairs that are needed. So, at this point, uh, we were looking to have another ten-year- So at this point, uh, we were looking to have another ten-year, uh, agreement entered into. If we do not, we would have to remove the trail, and obviously that would be a huge expense, and I think that trail is pretty heavily used, so we wanna continue to, uh, maintain that into the future, so. Um, at this point, we have the agreement in front of you. There was one, uh, item that may come back in front of you in the future, and if it is, it'll be an amendment to the agreement. But, uh, MINDOT is still at this point looking into a couple of, uh, we had our, uh, if the council remembers, back in twenty nineteen, we approved an ADA transition plan for, uh, curb approaches and other things. Now granted, this is on, uh, MINDOT roadway, and they needed to verify that some of the ADA approaches were still meeting their standard, and they had not done that by the time this is coming in front of you. So they said, well, if anything needs to be done, we will have an amendment for you. And it's undetermined if that would be city work or MINDOT work to correct that, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but they've not changed since we put the trail in, so, um, we can proceed with the agreement as we have it here today, and if anything changes, it'll come back in front of you. But, um, I think, uh, our task was that we would address them if we need to, uh, when we have other corrections made to other ADA, uh, curb ramps in the future. But, um, we'll see what MINDOT has to say about that, but I think we're, we're fine to move forward as it is written at this point.
Okay. So any questions? So I'll offer resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven dash zero five dash zero five. Second?
Second.
Heard Sean, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so now we're down to miscellaneous.
Uh, yep, we just have some meeting minutes for your reading, and then the financial updates from the, uh, joint powers board with the school involving the Aquatic Center. And also just kind of an FYI for you all unless you have any questions, so.
All right, anybody else? Maggie?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Sean?
I just had a question. Um, Ken, did we ever get an answer from Scott if we could have two council people on the planning commission?
Um, I'm gonna be talking to him tomorrow.
Oh, okay. We had discussed it just because we're short, you know, we only have three out of five, and it, we're not getting any, have we got any applicants in that last?
We actually have.
Oh, we did? Oh, good.
We just got one.
Okay.
I don't know if we got the second one in yet, but we did get one.
Okay, so we're close, cuz during the summer, Dan and I both have, sometimes it's tough for us to get back for those meetings, and, um.
So there's five members or five?
There's supposed to be five, but there's only three, and if one of us, I don't wanna cancel a meeting because I or Dan can't make it, cuz we're that short, but, so I had proposed, cuz I know that Rick wanted to be, years ago, wanted to be on the planning, I thought maybe not.
Yeah, I'd still do it.
Okay, but we weren't sure if we could have two council people if, to fill out that.
Good question. Ask Scott.
Reading through our, um, zoning ordinance has some enabling language, and then our, um,
Charter.
City code obviously does as well. Um, it looked to me like it would have to change in zoning ordinance side of things, so I'm just gonna verify that with Scott. I have another item I'm talking to him in a while about, so.
Okay.
Will you add in there that, um, how much work would it do to have alternates sitting on the side? So if somebody doesn't show up to these committees, an alternate would go in.
So I actually did talk to Scott about that, cuz we discussed it for the golf board, um, they have seven members, potentially reducing to five, but having two alternates sit. Um, and Scott said the state of Minnesota does not currently allow for that. While it is allowed for in some states, Minnesota does not allow for alternates at this point.
At the last city I was at, I don't know.
Oh, really? Yeah, I mean, this is his opinion, I guess, that, that the state didn't allow, state statute didn't allow for it.
We have a hard enough time filling the seats, let alone getting alternates too.
Anything else?
No, that was it. I just was kinda curious.
Okay, I don't have anything, Rick?
I have nothing.
Um, chief?
We had a ongoing, uh, posting for another position, uh, that would be my replacement, uh, backfill, uh, which I have not chosen a date yet, um, or have put it off yet. But, uh, that was open through July first. We ran it three weeks previous to that, and then just opened it for a month until position filled. Uh, we had a couple applicants. We'll be working on trying to put together some interviews for them. Um, but the market's real tight out there right now, so we will continue to work on that. Uh, just wanted to keep you up to date on where we're at with the process anyways.
Who will do the interview process?
Um, normally, uh, we have, uh, I do a couple sergeants, and then, uh, in the past, we brought in some other people from other departments, um.
So, so this would just be for an officer, um, not necessarily for the chief position.
Yeah.
This would just be for an officer.
Yeah, just backfilling.
Oh, I see.
Or when I would leave, yeah.
Gotcha.
That's our process. Um, other than that, uh, nothing else. I'll work forward for, with, uh, the state on getting a permit for the Dozinki event. And, uh, we'll see what they come down with, their permit or not. Usually they hold off till the week of, but I'll try and push them a little faster.
Isn't there state law?
Huh?
Or is that expired? Wasn't there?
Uh, no, it's still in place, but in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we went through a process where we, they hired a company to work with all cities and plan all events and come up with a traffic plan for every one of them. So we had, uh, Parade of Lights, Homecoming, Dozinki, and Memorial Day Parade were our events that we normally got permits for. I think the, the reason around that was they wanted a, a solid traffic plan submitted with each permit application. For instance, for Dozinki, because it's a two-day event, the process for that, our traffic plan would cost about between six thousand and ten thousand dollars for signage, because it's setting up an actual detour like we do for construction. In the past, safety signs have always been willing to accommodate and donate that. But I could see in the future that that's gonna be more and more difficult because of the expense with that. But we'll keep working on it.
A big bill.
That is. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay.
Nothing more?
Ken, Josh, uh, one quick question. Are they still closing Main Street this weekend?
Uh, no, so they, uh, so we were having that initial fight over some of the crack panels, and they came back and said they still don't agree with it, but they're gonna do it. And, but to do it, they wouldn't be able to, uh, do all that work this week. So the work got pushed back to sometime in August. We don't have a hard date yet at this point. But I think they're trying to coordinate all of the closure at one time, so they don't have to come back and do multiple closures.
Okay.
I've seen all the pitting, but I never seen the crack. I looked for it.
No, it's there. You can, right in the middle of the.
I was gonna say, you gotta, I was gonna say you gotta drive out in the middle of the street. It's all out in the street.
Wait till I get my new wheelchair and I'll try it.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else for the good, I take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
I will see you in a little bit.
Yep, yep.
You going?
I'm gonna head up there.
You're not gonna go?
Actually busted open a ulcer this weekend.
Uh-oh.
Are you gonna go, Josh? Good.